Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the first of February. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for the February 5th regular council meeting. So council, if you could please refer to that document. First few items are liquor license applications, followed by an off-track betting license application. We don't see that every day. So, just out of curiosity, I didn't tell us about that. I didn't know that we regulated off-track betting in the city of Mesa. I'm sorry to spring this on people, but I'm just kind of, I don't remember seeing this before. Is this the first one of these we've done, or have I just not been paying attention?
This is not the first one that we've had. We've probably got four or five right now. We do regulate off-track betting. They're able to share a space with a liquor license, a restaurant that's already there. So they do have some regulations that they have to adhere to.
Okay. So they're just going to be live streaming the Turf Paradise horse races, and there'll be off-track betting at this restaurant or bar in Mesa. Is that okay?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Learned something. Appreciate it. Item five are various purchase contracts. Council, you may have noticed, one of these purchase contracts is unusually large. That would be item 5O. It's not every day that we have $126 million contract that we're involved in. So Beth, this is our wastewater treatment plant. Again, this is one of the biggest projects, if not the biggest project the city has ever done, right?
Yes, it is. Good morning.
Can you update us on it a little bit?
I can, if I can get the mouse to do this. Hmm. Does it come up? I can't get the, is it stuck somewhere?
I think we've been having some cable issues this morning. Our monitor wasn't working off the bat.
You can't, oh, well. Well, good morning. I'll do it on the fly. So, good morning, mayor and council. My name is Beth Hunning, and I am the city engineer. And with me on my left today, I have our water resources director, the amazing Jake West.
I wondered where that amazing Jake's staying.
I'm not a Phillyan of that organization.
So, sorry about the cable issues this morning. Carrie, our boss, Carrie Kent's out of town. She left us with some sage advice. Act like pros and be brief. So we're going to endeavor to do that this morning. But this is, as the mayor mentioned, our largest project here in the city of Mesa for the history as I know it today. And it's the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. The plant is actually located in the town of Gilbert, and it's important to remember that this project is a partnership with two of our fellow municipalities, the town of Gilbert and the town of Queen Creek. And it's located at Gilbert and Jermaine Road. You may have passed it on your way down to Gilbert at different times. I'm not going to read this slide, but it's important to note, people always ask, well, what capacity is the plant? We are currently at about 16 million gallons a day of water that goes into the plant. We're going to be almost doubling the capacity with this expansion that you see today. And it'll be, when we're done, will be just a little less than half of the total build-out that's on the site. I'm not going to read this chart either, but there are a lot of numbers. We get asked, what is Mesa's percentage of the plant? We are going to be taking our capacity. We're not, we're just over-tripling the capacity in this plant for Mesa citizens, for our growing eastern and southern part of the city with this expansion. And I think it's, when we're done, we'll own about 60% of the plant, right?
60% of this expansion is going to be due to Mesa's needs.
Our ownership is based on a complex formula of liquid flow and concentration of the waste streams. So, the expansion schedule, we were here in September of last year with the first GMP, and if you drive by today, you'll see a lot of dirt flying. There's some big holes being built right now. We're here today to ask you to approve the second contract with the contractor, McCarthy, our GMP number two. We need to award the total contract because Mesa is the managing partner. So the total contract is $121 million. We'll be paying 72 of that million, and then the town of Queen Creek and the town of Gilbert will have their portion to pay as well as part of the contract. We expect this plant to be online in summer of 2020. We need the capacity at that point. And total completion in fall of 2020. So that's about it.
Beth, did I hear you say that after the expansion, the plant will be at half of its total build-out? So I guess we're anticipating as this part of Mesa grows, what's the plans for additional build-out after this?
Well, once this expansion is completed and as the systems grow, both not in, just in, not in Mesa, but in Gilbert and Queen Creek and the needs go, there's always been a plan when this first started as a lift station back in 2003, 2004, that there would be a future Phase IV expansion. This is Phase III. So we don't have a timing of that yet. We won't know that until, you know, growth addresses itself. So this expansion and the timing of it is more to address all of the growth that's going in Gilbert, Queen Creek, Santan Valley area, and Mesa. So we don't have a date or a time, but then that would be, that would be the last expansion. We don't have any more room after that fourth expansion.
Great. Thank you.
That point is, it's a great regional project where we've anticipated growth. And so I think that that is the good news. And we often get asked this question on our bond ratings with our, the financial bond rating groups about our capacity to expand into the future. That's a big issue for a lot of communities. Sometimes they, while they have room to grow, they don't have the infrastructure to support it. So in this manner, this project, as you can see, we can tell them, not only are we expanding today, but we have the opportunity to continue to meet the needs of our growth in the future.
What's the service area for this plant? Because obviously, we have another wastewater plant at the far west end of the city.
Yeah, northwest covers the central basin and central Mesa, and then we have southeast. It has a portion of southeast Mesa, but this plant has the capacity to take everything east of the 202 along the EMI down to Jermaine Road.
Another wastewater plant in and around the Superstition Springs area?
Yes, that's the southeast plant. That does not have solids handling. Those solids go to Greenfield, and so that's a smaller, smaller plant.
But we can say it's where we're seeing the greatest growth, is what this is handling.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I just wonder, what do we do with the effluent?
The effluent is the stuff that, with the Greenfield, we have a contract with the Gila River Indian Community where we send our effluent, is whatever we can per our agreement to them, and we have a cost sharing where for every, I think it's for every four and five MGD of effluent we get, and we get four MGD of groundwater credits.
Okay.
That's primary.
Mr. Thompson.
You know, one of the questions I've asked, I've asked this before a long time ago, but what is the capacity on Queen Creek, on their portion? And I ask because with their development that they're doing south of Jermaine Road, putting more and more and more housings in, rooftops in, at some point in time, they're going to hit or exceed their capacity. And what happens when they hit or exceed their capacity?
So Queen Creek is basically maintaining their current liquids capacity, but I think if you look at this chart that I have, they're going up quite a bit in their solids capacity. One of the things that we are experiencing in this industry, which has changed a lot over the 38 years I've dealt with projects like this, is that with the low-flow water use fixtures that are going into residential components today, we see a lot lower gallons per day and a lot higher concentration of the waste. And I, their solids concentration, I think, is going up in this, in this expansion. So we're adding capacity for their solids expansion, but not for their liquid side. That's where we've seen the growth in Queen Creek.
But I guess to your question, this is partnership or regional, kind of has an allocation of?
Yes.
Of cost and capacity. So at some point, if they maximize that, they'll have to find other options.
Yes.
Right now, there's, within this?
Expansion.
Expansion, they have the capacity.
What's the staffing look like at the water treatment plant? It's, how's it in Gilbert, right?
Yeah, it's at Greenfield, and it's staffed by City of Mesa staff. And right now, we've, we're recruiting for new positions because as the plant expands, we're going to need more maintenance help as well as operators. So we have an active recruitment for all of our treatment plants right now because we've also got the Signal Butte plant that's going to be coming online in 2018. So it's a tight market. All the cities are competing for the same talent. So we're probably at about 90% at Greenfield today, but we'll need to bring on additional maintenance staff, as we will at some of the other plants as well.
So Mesa operates that?
Mesa operates, we're the lead agents. We operate and maintain, and we hold the contracts, and our partners pay into part of that.
Yeah, there's an active group agreement that allows us to allocate even the, not only capital costs, but the operating costs that we incur. Yeah.
Similar to the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant in Mesa that is operated by the city of Phoenix.
And we're, but we're the ones that, yeah, we pay them.
Right.
And we actually, and then a lot of this waste eventually, at some portions of our waste is actually sent down to the, I don't know if we call the plant in Phoenix.
91st Avenue.
91st Avenue.
Wastewater Treatment.
And again, Phoenix is the operator, and we pay into that. So these are the right, you know, we get into these big plants, whether it's water treatment, especially wastewater treatment, regional facilities is really the way to go. And I think that's one of the strengths of this whole region is multiple cities coming together to find solutions to these, to these issues.
Well, great, thank, good work. I mean, good job to men. I remember there was 2014, we had about a half a billion dollar bond that passed, and this is a big chunk of it. The other part, I'm sure we'll hear about the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant as that progresses along?
Yes, that is too. We are supposed to turn the tap in May of this year for the Signal Butte Water Plant. So we'll be delivering water this summer out of that plant.
Look forward to that. Mr. Thompson.
And Jake, thank you and your team, and Beth, your engineering for the tour yesterday. We, it's been about six or seven months since I've been out there, and it's gone a long way. We had, one of our citizens wanted to take a tour, and so we set up a tour. So I went out with her and Jake's staff. It's amazing what, how far along they've come.
He keeps building it, and then he buries it and puts it underground.
I know.
We like that stuff better.
We do.
It stays better, it works better that way.
Works better.
Okay, well, thank you for the good update. So that was item 5O on our agenda for Monday. Any other questions about any of the purchase contracts under Agenda Item 5? Six is taking action on resolutions. Mr. Thompson.
The only question I had was on 6F. When I went through the council report, on the second page, description of project, item number five talks about during the first 10 years with Kahoots, they'll provide no fewer than 15 scholarships to Mesa high school students. The way it's worded, it almost sounds like it's strictly just like Mesa school districts.
Oh, should we say city of Mesa, or high schools in the city of Mesa or something to that?
Right, because, you know, because if it sounds just like it's Mesa schools and leaves out the Gilbert and the Queen Creek.
Let us, we'll tweak that to encompass any high school student in the city of Mesa. Is that what you're looking for?
Perfect.
Okay, we can do that. Yes, and mayor, council mayor Thompson, if I can, Kahoots is already actively working with Mesa Public Schools right now to offer 10 scholarships to get things started.
Yeah, but what we need to do is connect them with Gilbert Public Schools.
A third of Gilbert schools are in Mesa, as well as Queen Creek's going to be building a new high school in Eastmark, so.
We'll make that change.
Yeah, we can do that. And they'll be here on Monday evening, so we can talk.
Great. Here's a spoiler alert, you guys. This 6F is a really big deal. Kahoots is a really big deal. So I plan on making, talking a lot about it next Tuesday at the State of the City as well, just because it's the kind of thing that deserves a lot of publicity. So it'll be on our agenda Monday, but then I'm, we're inviting them to come to the State of the City on Tuesday as well and explain why we're all so excited about this. So Jeff, thanks for a great job in putting this together. Tony, congratulations.
Oh, yeah. Tony brought them here, so.
Appreciate it. Along with the grid as well. Again, the Kahoots is moving into a $60 million development on Mesa Drive and Main Street. And that in and of itself is another very big deal that we're very excited about. Thanks. Then Agenda Item 7 is introducing various ordinances, and 8 is receiving public comment. Again, right now, it doesn't look like there's anything off the consent agenda, but let us know if that changes. Next item on the agenda for this meeting is to, presentations. Item 2A is to hear a presentation discussed and provide direction on a comprehensive update of the city's sign code with emphasis on portable signs. We have been looking forward to this day for, what, a couple of years now, as our, the whole sign code has been a little bit in limbo, thanks in part to our friends in Gilbert that made their way to this United States Supreme Court, but I know it was an issue even before that. But thank you. Please let us know what we have to look forward to.
Thank you, mayor. Great, and council, great introduction. So I'm Angelica Gavada. I work in Development Services, and John Wesley is here also. We'll both be providing the presentation today. So as the mayor kind of indicated, we'll be focusing on portable signs today. We'll be back next week to give you an overview of what we're proposing for permanent signs. And so he kind of gave the idea away already as to why we're working on this update, and it really does have to do a lot with that Supreme Court decision. But also, we really did need a comprehensive update. Our ordinance was last comprehensively updated in 1986, so we were due for an update. And so some of the objectives that we used in this update was to reorganize the chapters and sections and update the portable sign allowances, because we cannot regulate our allowances based on the messages that are on the signs themselves. We have to change some of those classifications. We also are updating the permanent sign allowances, with that updating the design standards and then adding in some optional sign allowances. And we'll get into the details further today and then next week as well.
So mayor and council, as Angelica mentioned, we haven't comprehensively updated our sign code since 1986. So we've had one chapter in the zoning ordinance that deals with signs, and different sections have been added, and right now, it's a little bit of a complicated mess to kind of work through the different provisions. So one of the main things that we're taking the opportunity to do here is to break out the ordinance into chapters and put it in a more logical sequence of events, so that it'll be easier for everyone to use. So you see on the screen the chapters that are being proposed in the sign plan, starting with the basic introduction of why we're doing it, what we're trying to accomplish, some general procedures, moving then through the regulations from what we temporarily, previously called temporary signs, now calling portable signs, then into permanent signs with good descriptions of each of those regulations, on into the prohibited. So we've covered kind of all the information about the different types of signs in those three chapters, then we move into the processes and procedures from there, the chapters that deal with how you get your comp sign plan, how we issue the sign permits, and how we're, we are then working with helping to maintain signs and dealing with those types of issues in the latter chapters.
Mr. Luna.
I had to go, or John. Now, when you're talking about prohibited signs, it has nothing to do with the message, it has to do with the size of the sign?
Correct. It has to do with certain types of signs. Again, that's, what, chapter 45? I guess I can look my notes.
44.
44 of the code. And so there's, there's two sections to it. One deals with specific sign types that are prohibited, and another part deals with some of the occasional issues that go with sign types and where they can't be, that become prohibited.
So essentially, a sign is a free-for-all. You can, any message, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we can't regulate the content of the sign? We can just regulate the size and the location and, but not the messaging?
Correct. We'll get into that a little bit more here as we proceed, but that's, that's correct. So in chapter 41, just a couple of things we wanted to highlight in that introductory chapter. This is the chapter that provides us with the findings. Why are we doing this? What are we trying to regulate? We talked about that in 41-1 with different things. Don't want to obstruct views, want to have safety along our roadways and not have confusing messages, have visual clutter. And we get into the purpose of the code, then it responds to those findings. So we're trying to, you know, protect the public health, safety, welfare, allow for effective communication by businesses, and avoid that clutter, and keep an aesthetic roadway. In this chapter, we also talk about what the sign code does not apply to in section 41-2B. And so there's certain things, addressing, you put your address on your building, not counting that towards your sign area. Government signs, traffic control devices, those don't count towards any type of sign requirements. Anything authorized by state statutes are not covered by our ordinance. Public transportation signs, those are the things required by our sign code. We are silent in our code with regard to political signs. I know that's been a little bit of an issue in the past. We're leaving that up to basically the state and just not addressing it in our code. So with that, we're ready to move, unless there are any questions about that, can move to chapter 42 and the portable signs and go into some more details about what those regulations will be.
I'm sorry, John. I wrote down about five questions when you told me the five things that we're regulating here. So if you don't mind, I'll just, let me just rattle them off. We talked about safety, and I know more and more we're seeing folks asking for help, you know, in the right-of-way, particularly on freeway on-ramps and off-ramps. And I'm under the impression that, when I see that, to me, it seems like a safety issue, and I worry about these people getting hit by cars. Can we regulate people standing on corners at freeway interchanges asking for assistance for safety purposes?
Mayor, that's a good question. A little bit outside, I think, directly of the sign code, certainly the issue of sign walkers is something we don't regulate.
Okay.
That's, again, a state statute prohibition.
Somebody holding a sign is not a sign?
Mayor, it's considered a sign walker.
Okay.
Right.
So we regulate sign walkers under a different, or do we?
No, we don't. A mayor and council, because the state passed a statute that allowed for sign walkers, and so, and also because of constitutional limitations on the First Amendment, the very foundation of which Reed was decided, which makes the regulation of sign walkers very complex and difficult. There is at least one case in which the limiting, providing limitations as to people crossing or staying within medians, narrow medians, but it's not a sign case, and it's not a limitation on solicitation. And so, but the ability to sort of limit solicitors and their signs at intersections has been challenged, and a number of cities have lost. And so there are some cities that do have current codes with those type of prohibitions. I don't know how aggressively they enforce them because of potential challenges.
Okay. That's what I thought I'd heard, is that there was a First Amendment right for those folks to be there doing that. I just want to confirm that that was the case. Okay. So people's, people's signs are a different issue. We're not regulating them under this code, and folks at freeway interchanges got that. We've heard the small temporary signs that go up in the right-of-way, for example, you know, real estate mogul needs apprentice, you know, guaranteed $10,000 a month, call this telephone number. I mean, those types of signs, and I remember Mr. Meisner, for example, had talked about having Saturday cleanup events where we go around and pick up trucks and grab as many of those as we can. But what's the status of those types of signs?
Mayor, council members, those are considered signs that are in the right-of-way, which are not allowed under the existing code, and we're proposing to keep that the same. So they would still not be allowed.
Were illegal, always have been illegal, and are still illegal?
Correct.
Okay, so the...
Because of their location.
Not because of what they say, but just because they were in the right-of-way. Okay, so speaking of right-of-way signs, you said we're not addressing political signs at all. So I understand that's free speech, and that's even political free speech, which is about the most protected speech there is. But those of us that have been in that business in the past, there's been rules regarding when you can put those signs up, where they can go. Are those rules all gone now?
Mayor, council members, the regulations on political signs are provided in state statutes. Our sign code will not address political signs. The only, the only area where we would address them is if they're placed in the right-of-way and they are creating a safety hazard. So if they're blocking visibility for drivers and there's a safety issue, then our code officers would be able to remove them.
Otherwise, it's a state law that...
Correct. Otherwise, yeah, they're regulated by state statutes.
And one addition on that, mayor and council, is it's the actual state statute, both it allows it or regulates it, and the regulation on sort of the safety issues that Angelica just talked about are in the state statute. So what we're doing is, in that regard, is also consistent with the state statute. So we will comply with the state statute.
So if political signs comply with the state statute, presumably they're not going to be a safety hazard, and we won't feel the need to address them.
Just a quick comment on that. Christine Zalanco with Development Services. We have worked very closely with our traffic engineers over the years to determine what is objective criteria for visibility and safety as far as distance from the roadway. We've been very consistent that it's 15 feet behind the edge of the right-of-way, or essentially the edge of the curb. So we try to educate candidates and their committees at the beginning of every political season that they need to be back 15 feet. And that really has been very consistent on how the city of Mesa has determined what is the safe location for a sign next to a road.
So status quo, nothing changes. We're just going to follow the state statute there. Are there other questions? Okay, this morning, and for the last several mornings, I've seen at the intersection of Mesa Drive and Brown, a large sign inviting me to run the Utah Valley Marathon in June. And so there are, and I'm used to seeing marathon signs. It seems like there might be a different code for marathon signs, because they're everywhere, and they're, they're in the right-of-way, it appears. Is it, is there any special rules for event signs that maybe allow this sign to be in the right-of-way six months prior to this event in another state?
Mayor, council, our code will regulate, will not regulate political, sorry, government speech. And so any, any signs that are, for events that are sponsored by the city would not be regulated. Something such as a marathon from Utah, I would imagine that the city, that is not a city-sponsored event, so therefore, it probably would not be allowed in the right-of-way. So it would be something that our code officers would need to address through enforcement.
Okay. Well, I'll pass, I'll lodge a complaint then and see if, yeah, all right. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Angelica. Christine, good, come on back.
Yes, sir.
So I've had a lot of conversations with some of our constituents in D1, and some of it was about permits. As I read through the presentation here about use permits, do we, are we going to have a process even for the temporary signs, like where a person can come in, take out a permit? Could we regulate putting a permit number on there with an expiration date? And then we're talking about enforcement. I mean, do we have the capability to enforce these signs after they're, could be permitted? And there was other discussion about maybe this deposit. If people are good, sign put her uppers and take her downers. Maybe they can get their deposit back, if we want to go that far. But there's other ideas spinning out there, how we can create a little revenue stream from this. So I'll just open up that dialogue.
We have had that discussion for quite a while, and we've spent a lot of time trying to figure out how in the world, quite frankly, we would administer it and enforce it. To be brutally honest, we simply don't have the resources right now to do it. You know, we were talking something in the range of maybe $10 or $15 for the permit, but just the, the cost to actually issue it, track it, pull it back. We just determined at this point in time, we, we just can't administer that kind of a program.
So is there any possibility, well, with that said, then, I guess they wouldn't be taking out a permit or after that?
At this point in time, we do not have a proposal to issue specific permits. It really is the relying on whoever's putting the sign up, that if it's in the right location, if there's a certain amount of time allowed for it, for example, grand opening banners and that kind of thing, that it's the responsibility of the owner, quite frankly, to take it down. We will address it from a code compliance perspective. We'll have code officers deal with it. But that's primarily on a complaint basis, or if it is obviously falling apart, it's non-condition, it looks bad.
Mayor, council, to add to what Christine just said, so the majority of the portable signs will not require a permit, but there are some categories that we are currently issuing use permits for that do require a permit and that will continue to also require a permit. Some of those are banners.
Mr. Luna.
Just something to look in the future. I like his idea, but maybe eventually, signs have a QR code that residents can just get the QR code and send it in, say, is this sign legal? And that would, that'd be a process of determining whether the sign is legal or not, but something we can think about in the future.
Yeah, we've actually thought about that. If we did issue permits, obviously, we've gone electronic with just about everything. How could we administer something like that so residents wouldn't have to come down?
Yeah.
And get a permit, but we're, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Something Christine said a moment ago prompted a question. So it's great to have new and improved regulations, but I don't know, do we have the resources to enforce them? I mean, are, if we've got these right-of-ways, these little right-of-way signs, you know, that are clearly out of compliance, is it on anybody's job description to be out there doing something about it?
Yes.
Can you describe to me, what is our enforcement capability?
At the current time, we have code officers, we also have a code supervisor. We typically see them Monday mornings, you know, and they put them up Monday afternoons. We see them recently post, or attached 10 feet high on light poles and that kind of thing. That's just part of the regular duties of our code officers to pull those up. You will be having that discussion during the budget presentations as to whether or not you would like to see more enforcement on those portable signs, and how we could do it in the most cost-effective manner.
I think we need ways experimenting with, like, a college student who's going around with a supervisor. So we're trying to find low-cost ways to try to enforce the sign code. So we're looking at different ways to get out there. I think we've, in the past, we've had volunteer groups that have been able to do it, but we've got to make sure, at the same time, we also have to make sure they have the right training and know what they're doing, because, again, we have to be under, there's a lot of sensitivity to signs out there with the Supreme Court case, so we really have to focus on, you know, the location and the size and where it's at. So we're, it takes some level of training and familiarity with the law, and we, because we have to be very careful, because that's how it started in our cousins down south, is that, you know, they just started enforcing it, and so we have to be very careful that we avoid those kinds of complaints.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
I know in the past, we've had volunteers doing sign pickup and stuff. Do we still have that? And I know there were some very, very passionate people, very passionate, trying to collect signs, and so, in terms of volunteers and training, are we continuing to do that?
Quite frankly, the sign code volunteer group that had been very active, the individuals that were extremely passionate and really provided the leadership, got tired of doing it and notified us they were not interested in doing it anymore. That was about a year and a half, two years ago. We do have one or two individuals that have kind of stepped back up again, new folks, that are interested in volunteering their time, so we're continuing to look at that, plus, as the city manager said, looking at low-cost options of, you know, perhaps a part-time person just to deal with the, or a contract person just to deal with those bandit signs.
Jeremy?
Have we considered doing something like the Adopta Highway, where we basically sponsor, you know, like a small advertisement or something for a business that agrees to keep that part of the roadway cleared of signs or anything like that?
That's a great idea.
We could look into that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I think we interrupted you in the middle of your presentation, Angelica.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Great questions here. So, moving forward with this proposed sign ordinance, we're having to look at the regulations a little bit differently, because in the past, we used to classify the allowances based on the type of message, so if it was a development sign, a real estate sign, for example. And so now, what we're, the way that we're moving forward is by basing the allowances on the materials, the structure type, the method that the signs are anchored or attached, either to the ground or a building, and then also based on the zoning and the size of the lot or the parcel. And so what you see on this slide is the different types of portable sign types. So, starting at the top right, we have the detached rigid signs, we have attached rigid, we'll have the rigid A-frame, semi-rigid yard sign, and then, of course, at the bottom left, the fabric wall banners, and then the fabric detached banners.
So, mayor and council, we want to go through and provide you some comparison of the existing code, what it would allow compared to what's being proposed in the new code, so you can see how things are being impacted. Our general goal has been rough equivalency. Because of the change in nature of the types of signs, we can't just do direct apples-to-apples, but we're trying to keep things as consistent as possible, and only modify in regulations where we think there is a real need. So today, on a single-family residential lot, a person could have, because it's by sign types by message, could have a for-sale sign, could have a contractor sign, if had somebody come work something on their house, a contractor puts a sign out, they can have an open-house sign. So those are three types of signs you could legally see in a single-residence lot today. There are certain allowances for the size of those, the height of those signs. Individual signs can be a maximum of six foot tall, for example. We currently do not allow A-frame signs in the single-family residential area. We don't allow the banner signs or some of those other types either, currently, and, again, they're prohibited from being in the right-of-way.
And so, moving forward, what we're proposing in the code is to have somewhat of an equivalent allowance, and so, the way that the code is proposed is it would allow two signs per street frontage for each residential lot. So if a lot happens to be on a corner, yes, they would be allowed to have additional signage than a lot that is surrounded by other lots. In addition to that, we're proposing a maximum aggregate sign area of 12 square feet, with an individual sign being able to be up to eight square feet and six foot tall. And because they are allowed different types of signs, the detached rigid or the yard signs, and the lot would be allowed two signs, they can choose, and so what we have in the bullets here is that they could have an eight-square-foot detached rigid sign or a six-square-foot yard sign, but it just depends on the type that they select. And then, we would continue not allowing A-frames and not allowing signs in the right-of-way.
What if an HOA has a regulation that's more or less restrictive than that?
Mayor, council members, any regulations by an HOA would be in addition to any regulation that the city has.
So an HOA could have a...
Not less.
HOAs could have more restrictive, yeah.
Correct.
And again, and just to remind us what we already know, this doesn't apply to political signs.
That is correct.
Presumably, if it complies with the state statute, you could have five different political signs in your yard at any given time.
Yes, mayor, and any sign, any additional regulation that the HOA would impose on their property owners, they would have to enforce, the city does not enforce those restrictions.
Okay. So moving on to another example of a vacant piece of ground that's ready for development and the types of portable signs, temporary signs that could go on there. With today's code, again, they can have that real estate sign, because it's a larger tract of ground, in this example, 17 acres, the size of that real estate sign can be bigger, and in today's code, up to 24 square feet. Again, they can have contractor signs on the property, with contractors that may be working on the, on the property. And we have two other classifications under today's code, development signs and subdivision signs, that could also go on these types of areas. Those are typically larger signs, 32 square feet, eight foot tall in these areas. And so you can have that variety of signs on a vacant piece of property as it's going through that development process today.
And so, moving forward with the proposed code, because we're no longer able to classify those allowed signs based on the message, we're having to just have what we've, what we're calling a standard allowance, and then also an undeveloped property allowance. So for this example, we would allow two standard signs under the standard allowance and two under the undeveloped property allowance. And so what we've provided here, because this specific example is at Valvista and McKellips, along the Valvista Drive frontage, based on the area of this property, they would be allowed to have 80 square feet of area in signage, and then on McKellips, another 80 square feet in area. They, at the bottom, on the right-hand side here, I've, we've provided the allowable sign types, so they would be allowed to have a detached rigid, attached rigid, and semi-rigid, depending on the types of signs that they are proposing to have at their property. They would be able to provide anywhere from four signs that are 32, at 32 square feet, or four that are eight square feet and six foot tall. It just depends on how they choose to mix those around.
One other thing, mayor, council, real quick on this slide. One of the situations we have in our current code with different message types, we've had different sign allowances in terms of size, again, that was one of the criticisms of, from the Reed decision, is changing those things based on the message. So we've had to standardize all of our signs, and we've picked the 32 square feet as the standard. So some of the signs that were smaller can now be larger at 32, and some that were larger at 48 are now limited to the 32, but it's standard across the board now at the 32. So then, the next example is a commercial development example, and so here we have an existing commercial pad, and so, again, looking at a situation such as this, the sign, portable sign allowances are still the same, we have the real estate sign, we have the contractor sign, we have the development and subdivision signs. So your typical commercial lot that's developed, unless you have a contractor working to do something to your building, you're putting their sign out there, or you're trying to sell the property, there's really no portable sign allowance. So portable signs you may see today, advertising businesses, aren't really what the current code provides for, but something you could see that Angelica will talk about under the new code. But they could have the banner signs for the grand openings, the special events, those types of things. Well, again, that's a message-based sign, so we can't regulate them that way into the future. Today, it's 30-day allowance for a grand opening, so we've had to address that in the new code and how to handle those.
So the way that we're moving forward is based on the area of the property, and it would be also sign allowances per occupant. Within this example, we have a commercial development at Baseline and Ellsworth, where there are, you know, there's a grocery anchor there, and then there are various pad sites there. And so, based on the specific acreage, they would be allowed, so when they are two acres or less, they would be allowed one sign per street front, up to 12 square foot each or 24 square foot total, and then if they are five acres or more, so for example, like the grocery anchor is over six acres in this example, they would be allowed three signs per street front, 12 square foot maximum per sign, but then they could have a total of 32 square feet. And they would also be allowed banners, whether they're wall banners or detached banners, and we're proposing an allowance of 45 days per calendar year, and then I've also listed the allowable sign types there, that they would be allowed to have the detached rigid, the fabric wall banner, and the fabric detached banner.
Okay, I'm sorry, that does prompt a question. So, if you have a commercial center like the one that's depicted here, where you've got multiple tenants, you know, and none of them are going to be 5, 8, wow. And let's say we've got a lot of turnover in this, this complex, you've got six or seven grand openings a year going on, sorry, you get 45 days of banners for the entire complex for the entire year. So you're going to have to allocate those 45 days among the multiple tenants?
Mayor, council members, that 45-day allowance for a banner is per tenant, so per occupant.
Per tenant, okay.
So it's not, it's not 45 days for the entire development site, yeah. It's allowance by property and by tenant.
So you could have many months of grand opening signs out in front of that complex if you've got multiple tenants that are having continuous grand openings?
Yes, mayor, but we also have to remember we're not regulating the message anymore, so it's not necessarily a grand opening banner.
Oh, it could be a banner for anything.
It's whatever message they want to put on the banner.
So each tenant in that large complex gets 45 days of banner advertising out on the street frontage?
That is correct, mayor.
Okay. That seems like a real expansion over the previous rule. If it was only previously, you could get 30 days for a grand open, for a specific purpose grand opening, now you can have 45 days for whatever purpose you want to advertise.
Mayor, and under the existing code, it was 30 days for a grand opening for a new proprietor, for change in ownership. There was a couple of reasons why they could have a banner for 30 days, so what we were trying to do is provide a somewhat equivalent allowance, and so if council feels that that is maybe a little too, allowing a little too much, we would be happy to take those comments. We have released the draft of the sign code a couple weeks ago, and we are in the public review and comment period, so we are looking to take any feedback and comments at this time, so that we can come back in a couple of weeks or months with a final draft.
Okay, yeah. I guess my comment would be, I don't see a need to expand it from 30 days to 45 days, and I think in a large commercial complex, a large grocery store anchored complex, you're literally 365 days a year, you could have multiple banners out in front of that complex that interferes with the right-of-way and vision and other things.
So, Angelica, so my question has to do with that, the banners and stuff. Have you, have you asked the businesses, is that something that they want to do, or...
So, mayor, council, vice mayor, Luna, we have actually had, we had a public meeting back in May, April, May of last year, and we had presented the ideas that we were looking to move forward with as we were drafting a sign ordinance. We've now released the actual draft now that it's been completed. We have scheduled a public meeting that we'll be holding on February 20th at 6:30 PM at Fire Station 201 at 360 East First Street, for anybody that would like to go if they're watching. And so we will be presenting what we have drafted and be looking for feedback and comments at that time as well.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Question on the fabric detached banners. It seems like a lot of the businesses and, like, some of the grocery complexes, the little ones that don't really have street, like, frontage road advertising, that those are up, it seems to me, like, 365 days a year, so I'm assuming that this would limit them, or if we change it from 45 to 30, they could only pick 30 days out of the year to put their fabric banners on the streets, is that correct?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, that is correct, that is what that would do.
And have any of the small businesses pushed back on that, as far as, like, from an advertising perspective, that they would be concerned, like, a loss of revenue?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, we have received some feedback, not specifically on this issue. They were actually understanding and accepting that what we were proposing. The feedback that we received was more on the subdivision marketing signs, it was more from the developers, where we were receiving those comments. We did, we have reached out to the Arizona Sign Association, International Sign Association, and multiple stakeholders with our draft, and are awaiting their feedback. I know that several of them are working on reviewing it so that they can provide us some comments, so we're waiting to receive that.
Okay. Yeah, it would just really be unfortunate if the small business owners weren't aware that the sign code was coming, and then if this drastically, you know, impedes their ability to market to people that they rely on driving by, so just something that I would ask that you guys keep in mind.
Yeah, mayor, council member Whitaker, we have an extensive list of stakeholders that do include a lot of agencies throughout the state and organizations in order to try and reach out to them, so we are seeking feedback.
Well, to that point, though, but before I get to Mr. Freeman, I think this is expanding a business's ability to use that type of signage more than previously, because previously, you could get, you got 30 days for a very short list of things, for a grand opening or something else. Now, you get 45 days, you don't need a reason, whatever you want.
So then, I'm assuming it wasn't enforced before, because, I mean, it appears to me, just by driving by multiple intersections, that those fabric banners are out, I would say, every single day. I don't notice that they disappear, but I'm not really paying that close attention.
Mayor, council member Whitaker, over the last year or so, as we've been working on this ordinance, and knowing we had the Reed issues to deal with, we have really been looking for a complaint basis to enforce those, but once we get a new ordinance, we know what the rules are again, as we've talked about previously with code compliance issues, we will step back.
We were very cautious about sign enforcement after that case, and so we wanted to make sure we had an updated sign ordinance in place and get it in front of the council, so that that would give us a little firmer ground in our enforcement, even with our code officers. So I think once we get this approved, it kind of provides some specific clarity within our code, that we're not doing this because of the content, you know, not because of the, whatever, part of the fabric that's out there, but we're doing it because it's in the right-of-way or the distance from the curb, and we'll feel, we feel like we'll be in a more certain position to enforce it going forward, so. But that's, it's a good point, because we do get that complaint or observation that there's been a proliferation of those...
Feather signs?
Banners, or those detached banners in the right-of-way, especially on weekends, and a lot of cell phone companies and other things like that, so that's something we'll need to pay attention to. And it, once it's approved, I think it may be helpful for us to, as we go out and enforce it, is do a lot of education in the first few times, and then after that, we'll get more aggressive in our enforcement.
Yeah.
And that may be one way to, how we communicate this, is initially, it may just be literally kind of a warning, and then after that, we can get into the stronger enforcement.
We're going to have a system that's going to be able to track 30 to 45, I mean, like, if somebody puts out a banner the first 30 days of the year, and then they go to put it up at the end of the year, you guys will be like, hey, you've had, you're 29 days, you've only got one day left?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, it's something that we're having discussions currently within our, with our staff, trying to determine how it is that we can regulate that within the existing system that we have. We haven't worked out the details. First, our first challenge was to complete a draft, which we've released for public review. We're working on trying to finalize it, and in addition to that, trying to work on the details as to how we will regulate some of that and just permit it, if it requires a permit.
Just a quick note, clarification on that also, that's really all part of the bandit signs also. When we talk to our code enforcement folks and figuring out how we can enforce those feather signs, which really, they, what, they started proliferating five, six years ago. So as the city manager said, we've been very cautious since the Gilbert case, but that's absolutely one of the things we're working with code on, to try to figure out how we can make sure that that is enforced.
Yeah, one of the things that would be really unfortunate is if we start enforcing those, what you referred to, the feather banners. those, what you referred to, the feather banners, where a legitimate business has paid for rent on that corner, but we're not enforcing, or we say that we can't enforce, we don't have the power to enforce the small bandit signs that are, you know, proliferating across the entire city, right? So I would just hate to see that we're enforcing more the legitimate businesses than the ones, to the mayor's point, you know, make $10,000 a week selling real estate or whatever else, you know. I think those are a bigger problem than the legitimate businesses that are paying rent and we're collecting taxes on.
And we, we're going to be very sensitive to those issues and try to do right.
Great, thank you. Mr. Freeman?
How does this affect me driving around seeing my favorite mannequins on the sidewalks going like this?
John?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman?
Is that a people sign?
I mean, they're, they're really neat out of my areas. Is she going to be a bandit?
Well, if she's a live person, she's not regulated.
Oh, it's mechanical, yeah, whatever it is.
Yeah. And so those, under the existing code, are prohibited and would continue being prohibited.
Okay, I'm being a little sarcastic, but that, and then the wind-driven things that flop around in the wind, and, you know, there's a commercial about it now, and I think it's kind of cute. But regardless, how are those affected? And then again, to Jeremy and the mayor's point, is we get, come back to enforcement, you know, to regulate. And I appreciate getting the sign code in, in place so that we have a template that everybody can go off of. So again, the floppy things, what, are they still bandits as well?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so we consider those air-activated signs, and those are prohibited under the existing code and would continue to be prohibited as well.
Whoa, wait a minute. Those are, so there's no allowance for that, for that type of signage at any time, at any place in our community. So if we see it, bang, we know they're out of compliance and they can be enforcing it. So, okay, didn't know that.
What's the reasoning behind that?
That, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, they create a distraction for drivers, and so it comes from safety, and then also visually, it creates clutter.
Visual clutter?
And safety.
Yes, Mr. Luna?
But aren't they actually, when they put those in the actual property of the businesses?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, Luna, it just depends. I've seen some out closer towards the sidewalk in the street where they're probably in the right-of-way, and I've seen some in, within parking lots. So it just depends on where they're placed.
And Angelica, the question is, if it's on their property, are they allowed? Are they considered a sign, or are they?
They are considered a sign, and right now they are prohibited, and we were proposing to keep, continue to keep those as a prohibited item.
So that'll be part, subject to the comment period that we're underway right now.
Correct.
So we'll see what kind of interest there is in, in making those legal, because I guess they always have been illegal, huh?
Correct. And we are here to try and receive direction, so if that is something that you would like us to consider.
I'm not going to fall on my sword for those signs, but...
But I would just say, maybe we could consider if they're not close to the street, to the point, like if they're on the rooftop. I'm trying to think of where I can picture one of those. I feel like there's a batting cage on like Bell Vista and Southern, they don't put it on this.
Country Club and Broadway is where I see the dancing sign, but, so, but the point is it's still a sign. So you, you still only get a certain amount of, you know, of signage on your building. You can't, you know, add additional signage to your building by attaching it to an inflatable man.
Well, and Mayor and council members, one of the challenges with those types of signs is how do you calculate the area of it in order to make it equitable to everybody? And is it, so that that would be one of the challenges with it. But like I said, if that was something that you wanted us to consider, we can, we have time where we could sit there, take a look at it, analyze it, research it, and then...
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Angelica, perhaps you might want to consider a time limitation. To me, they're, they're not a problem. I mean, aesthetically, I mean, they, they obviously draw attention, but they're not, to me, I haven't seen them for a long period of time. I usually see it when they're doing something special. So maybe looking at in terms of the length of time, and if it's in, within their property, why would we adjust, why would we want to regulate that?
It'll be interesting to get comments on it. Mr. Thompson?
I'm just curious how much it's going to cost us to enforce this sign code. I mean, you have all these different types of banners and things you can have, things you can't have. How many people and how much is it going to cost us to enforce?
Well, Mayor, Councilman Thompson, right now, most of the time with our sign code, it's done on a complaint basis. So if everybody drives by and sees the gorilla on top of the car cells, you know, and nobody complains, it doesn't, we don't, kind of the idea of being proactive versus just being complaint basis, because if we were to be proactive and just have a sign code enforcement to go through the city, your phones would be off the hook. So we do, as we, we, right now, there are times when we'll have some groups in specific corridors where we've had recurring problems. Sometimes we'll send out a group to do that. But right now, our, kind of our operation, and really what we can manage with resources, is based on complaints.
And I guess that's what I'm getting at. We're spending a lot of time on sign codes, but in, in the reality of it, we're going to have a code, one way or another, but we're really not going to enforce it unless somebody complains about it.
That's, the majority of the time, that's, well, we may look at doing some proactive enforcement, like I said, in certain types of signs, maybe, you know, we got a lot of complaints about freeway ramp areas and things like that, which, you know, so if it's a persistent thing like that, we may be active at doing that even before we get a specific complaint. But majority of the signs, yeah, that's typically how we're going to respond. We don't have just a sign crew 100% of the time. We do, I think we have some supervisors and others that'll do that every once in a while, but, because we think our resources are better spent in the neighborhoods, where we have complaints, where neighbors have very real concerns, health, safety concerns, and that's where we'll put most of our code officers.
Is there an exception application process? Like if somebody want to put a giant gorilla on top of their car dealership for 30 days because they had a sale, like is that something they could apply to do that's outside of the code?
Yeah, I think that's something we were going to look at.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, so currently, the way the code is written, the, one of the ways that we will consider a tailored sign plan is by having an applicant file an application for a special use permit for a comprehensive sign plan. It would go to public hearing with the Board of Adjustment. That is how we consider alternatives to sign criteria. But that can only be considered for signs that are allowed. So some of those signs that we've been talking about are prohibited, and so those, we would not be able to allow them even with a comprehensive sign plan.
I think what we're hearing is you'd like us to look at some, bring back some options otherwise, yeah.
Correct, so we'll take a look at that.
Or limited time of the year, or limited...
Yeah, I just think that it's hard for small businesses to succeed sometimes. And if somebody wants to go buy a, you know, giant gorilla and stick it on top of their car dealership to capture people driving by, I, I don't have an issue with that, you know. I think that's...
Okay. Another random question. There are some car dealerships that I, I wonder how they stay on the ground, because they've attached so many balloons, particularly on weekends sometimes, to their car dealership. Is this, is that regulated at all?
Mayor, council members, those balloons are prohibited under the existing code, and we're proposing to continue to make them prohibited.
Okay. How does the proposed new code relate to our neighboring communities? I mean, are, are our 45-day limits going to be dramatically more or less than other communities? And if I'm, you know, Bashes or Fries, or I've got to keep track of, oh my gosh, Mesa is much more restrictive, or oh, much more lax than across the street in Tempe?
So Mayor, we have done some comparisons with the adjacent communities and how they have updated their codes. And where we can, we've, you know, tried to copy some of the things they've done. But we've also mostly found that every jurisdiction's sign code is so different, it's hard to do many direct comparisons. But with a specific topic like this, it would be very easy for us to go in and look more specifically at this issue and see how they are doing them and see how we compare.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, just so we're in the, in the ballpark. We don't want to be, stick out like a sore thumb either direction, I don't think. I'm sorry, you're still in the middle of your presentation.
Got a few more to go.
Yeah. So, one of the other areas that we are looking to make some changes in is in the downtown pedestrian area. As you can see by this map, that area is bounded by Country Club to Centennial Way, First Street to First Avenue. What we're proposing to do, the area within the yellow box, is expand that downtown pedestrian area from Centennial Way going east towards Mesa Drive. The reason why we're proposing that is because this is the area of the city where we currently allow A-frame signs. And so this is the area where we're proposing to continue to allow A-frame signs. It's a pedestrian area, so it is more logical to have those types of signs out in the sidewalks to help attract attention of the businesses that are along those buildings. And so we're proposing to expand that just to help address some of the future development that we're seeing in the area.
And just, and I think that's kind of how we look at our downtown anyway today, is that expanded area to Country Club.
I agree.
Mayor, council, this next slide deals with fabric signs. I've already pretty well covered this topic, I think, in terms of the current allowance for those 30-day periods, and even the, the new option, but there's the temporary use permits maybe we haven't discussed.
Correct. So with the proposed code, we, we are proposing the 45 days, but we'll take a look at going down to 30, as you have indicated. In addition to that, though, we were proposing to allow additional days with a temporary use permit. But we'll be considering that as well.
So that would kind of go to Jeremy's point of what if I want to have, you know, can I come in and make my case for a special situation, or I'd like to have more than what the, what the code allows for? Okay.
Mayor, and that's how we would address it, is through the temporary use permit.
All right.
So, oh.
Mr. Glover?
Going back to Councilmember Whitaker's point, I'm like, if someone does want to put a gorilla on their building, business, I don't really care, because I'm like, it's not affecting anybody. So, but why should we regulate it for a certain amount of time? So what's the justification that you want to give for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, I think historically, as we've looked at this, because it is the current prohibition, is some concerns with these, with the attention that it may take from a driver trying to look at something that's as unique and different as that.
Wasn't that the purpose, was to draw them to that business?
Yes, but in a safe way. And so I think that's been part of the concern. And then I think there's been some concern about, with some of these, the quality of them, and the appearance that it gives in the community, in terms of aesthetic impacts that it can have. I think they've been probably the primary reasons why the prohibition's been there. But we, again, we'll be going back based on this input we've received.
We're going to do the research and see what other cities have done and bring that back to you.
And the prohibition was also to address visual clutter. If you start having portable signs, permanent signs, and then additional signs coming up of the roof or of a building, because that's where I typically see those gorilla-type signs, or the air-activated in the parking lot, that it just starts to be a lot of signage. And so that was the concern, that was the reason for the prohibition.
I would almost say that if it's on your own roof, that we would just leave that alone, because it's recessed far back in the business enough that I don't think it's going to affect, from my perspective, as the stuff you see when you're driving down the side of the street, when you take your time to look away from your cellphone, right? Because that's what we're all doing anyways. We talk about the real distractions. It's not the signs, it's...
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, and we will be going back and taking a look at that.
Thank you. Well, I mean, we do regulate the size of signs in our community, and every city does. And so, and businesses would love to get more signage, right? I mean, if I could instead, if I could get my way around the sign code by having a 20-foot inflatable sign on top of my building that said, "Come to my business," every business in town would do that, particularly when you're in a retail competitive environment. So I, you know, we do have this, that's the point of having a sign code, is we don't just let people do whatever they want to, to advertise their business. There's, there's parameters.
Balance.
Yeah. Do you want to turn on your microphone to say that?
I said, to me, it doesn't really matter, because if we're not enforcing it unless somebody complains, then why have such tight restrictions?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we do have a lot of businesses that, that do call, that do come into our office, that do follow the sign code.
And, and I think we set the policy. If we want to say, hey, let's be aggressive on bandit signs, and let's give a green light to our code enforcement guys, anytime you see a bandit sign in the right-of-way, please pick it up, but wait for a complaint on this category of, I mean, that's our fault. We're the ones that are going to give these people direction as to how to enforce and when, when to enforce it. I'm sorry, please proceed.
We're ready to wrap it up. So our last slide here is about the timeframe. So we've really covered a lot of this already, but just to reiterate some of it, we did issue the draft sign code. It's out there, has been now for a little over a month, so we can receive comment feedback on it. We have a specific meeting coming up in February that we are advertising for the general public. We are reaching out to various stakeholders and encouraging them to get us their comments, or to see if we can come meet with them. We're doing that over the next couple of months. We're reaching out to the advisory boards, planning zoning board, Board of Adjustment, Design Review Board, to get their input, feedback on the code. As staff, we took a few weeks off of not looking at it after being immersed in it for many months. And so we're looking at it with fresh eyes. We've gone through, particularly with the help of the City Attorney's Office, and, you know, finding some of the things that we missed, to, you know, correcting, you know, some of the language and, and areas where we need to tweak some things a little bit. So we know that the code we come back with ultimately for your action is going to be a little bit different than today. We appreciate the comments today. We will look at, at those and take them into consideration for the revisions as we go forward. We hope to be at P&amp;Z in April for them to take action on it, to make their recommendation onto you, and then, then get it back to you before you go on break, hopefully for your adoption.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Is there phases as far as violations as listed on the, what we send out? As far as, if you violate, if somebody complains, is there a series of different violations, a warning, or is that part of the packet?
Yes.
That's actually part of the code enforcement process, and it really isn't any different than the rest of the nuisance code on how we enforce it. They, we try to talk to them. We always look for voluntary compliance if, if they won't. There is a process of notices of violation and then eventually a citation. But our, our focus has always been, and from my perspective, should continue to be, to, to get proactive and voluntary compliance.
It is listed as far as the different steps that we take?
Yes. Yeah, the, the code enforcement officers also enforce the zoning code, which is where the signs are, but the enforcement process itself would be the same.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
One last question, but I doubt that. The whole purpose of this is to allow businesses to come in over the counter, a lot of, to do this business, instead of going through the Board of Adjustment and taking this off the Board of Adjustment's plate, streamlining the process to allow the signage to flow evenly, I guess.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, there are some signs that are issued over the counter, such as the banner permits. There are some signs that do require a submittal to obtain a signed permit. So they submit their plans, they get reviewed, then they can come in and pick up their permit. And then there are some developments that, which wish to tailor their sign criteria to their development, which then they would be filing a special use permit application, go through public hearing through Board of Adjustment to be allowed to have that sign package. We did take a look at the comprehensive sign plans that we have, that the Board of Adjustment has approved over the last 10, 15 years. And when we come back next week, we will show you some of the proposed changes that we're proposing for permanent signs. So it's, all of those changes are in permanent signs.
All right, thanks.
Great. I just want to make sure that wasn't the last question. When we, when we talk about streamlining the process, when you say people apply for a permit, do you mean like they literally have to come down here and apply for a permit, or like they are like taking pictures and submitting them on a web interface?
If I could just answer that, we do have the Dimes program for all of our permitting. Virtually everything can be done online these days. So we are continuing to work with applicants, whether they're for signs or for a brand-new building, that they do it all online, they can pay online, they, they do not have to come down, but that's continuing.
But we, but we also encourage, if they need to, to come down, because as much as technology is wonderful and efficient, sometimes that face-to-face explanation is very helpful for some of these businesses. But a lot of the regulars that do this, that's where the efficiency comes.
And planning also has a, what they call the planner of the day, somebody that's available at the front counter, if somebody wants to come and ask specific questions, where we will always continue to provide that service to our developers.
Okay, so this is round one, and you're going to come back with...
Permanent.
Permanent, okay. Monuments, okay.
So just one last comment to wrap up. For anybody watching on Channel 11 that wants to send in any questions or comments, we do invite them to send those in to the email at signinfo@maseazy.gov.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate the outreach you're doing to get citizen input, and that won't work unless people do respond. So please, well, we'll use this as a commercial. Please do give us your, your thoughts and feelings on this. All right. Thank you. Any other, are we sure that's the last question? All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item three, which is information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Council, do you see anything on that item that you'd like to talk about? Hearing none. The next item is item four, approval of minutes from executive session held on, on November 9th and November 20th. Thank you, Mr. Luna. Thank you, Mr. Luna, thank you, Chris, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is acknowledged receipt of minutes of various boards and committees, and those are listed. I won't go through them, but 5A through 5E, is there a motion to that effect? I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
This was brought up by previous councils as well, but is there anything we can do to get the note, the meeting minutes to us sooner? I mean, September to almost February seems...
It all goes about when the board meets.
Right, is there a way that they can do like an electronic review and signature to approve it?
So, yeah, we have, and sometimes what happens, it's not electronic, because then there's a quorum issue, but what we do is we put on the agenda, the last item is that the chair can approve the minutes, and so you don't have to have another meeting to approve minutes, and so we do do that, and, you know, especially like on the trust board, in which we meet once a year, so you literally have to wait another year, so we do that with the trust board. We need to be more proactive on some of these that meet occasionally and make sure we're powering the board.
It just means like four months, by the time you read the meeting minutes, the, you know...
It's driven by how...
Approve them, it's ancient history.
Yeah, it's just when they meet, so, but we can see if there's another way that the board have got comfortable with letting the chair do, although sometimes the board, other board members want to be able to vote on it too, so, but we can, we can ask, we'll work with those boards and see if we can come up with a way to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, thank you, Chris, all in favor, this is, again, approving receipts, the receipt of the minutes for 5A through 5E. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, I'm sorry, there was also 5F on the other side of this. Can we amend that motion through 5E through 5F?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you very much. Next item is hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Luna.
Just really quick, Empty Helicopter had a $1.4 billion sale of military hardware, and the mayor and I had an opportunity to meet the military personnel from Malaysia yesterday, so it's a great meeting, and it was, hopefully we'll get more sales going.
That's great. Yes, that's a big deal. You've noticed a lot of cars in the parking lot at Empty Helicopter right now, it's a congratulations to them on their success. Any other reports? Mr. Freeman.
I don't have a picture this year, but the mayor was able to ride on a little horse ride on January 27th, so I appreciate him coming out. We had 125 horse riders with people in wagons commemorating the pioneers who came in the Salt River Valley here in the Lehigh area. And beyond that, we had a neighborhood meeting, Councilmember Haredia and I sponsored a meeting regarding the light rail crime statistics for the West Mesa area, and it turned out, had about 40 residents and a really great panel of professional people. Adrian Reese from Valley Metro came and spoke her perspective, as well as Jody Sorrell. Councilmember Haredia, you want to...
It's a great turnout, you know, a lot of great question, feedback, so we're taking those questions and feedback to, you know, talk to staff and see what we can do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, that was a great event in Lehigh. Mr. Haredia.
Then last Saturday, we had the Regional Unity Walk in Tempe, which I attended, thanks for staff and Mesa PD, community engagement folks for being out there, so...
Thank you for representing us there, we appreciate that. I can't remember why I wasn't there, I had a conflict, I was in another, I think I was out of town.
Riding a horse.
I was still walking around funny from the horse ride.
About the best.
No, it was great, and it's great, I'm glad we have Lehigh, it is nice to have a rural equestrian part of Mesa, so that was a lot of fun. Other comments on meetings or reports? Hearing none, Mr. Brady, help us with scheduling of our next meetings.
Yes, just to remind council, Monday, February 5th, there'll be a, I think it's a short agenda, but there'll be a Sustainable and Transportation Committee meeting at 4:30, and then that will be followed by a council study session and a council meeting this coming Monday.
And I know, Mr. Freeman, you've heard, as have I, from our council about the interest in a strategic planning meeting over the next few months.
Right, and we have some dates that are being, you'll have in the City Manager's update for you to look at, and just let us know if, I guess, let us know if those dates don't work for you, so we have some dates that will be suggested in the update today.
Okay, great. Any questions on any of that, John? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, thank you, Chris. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.